Yep. So again, we just brought them down to Phase 1 and 3. Um, Phase 1 is really just helping for planning. Um, rehabilitating certain manholes, lift stations, performing smoke tests and line inspections just to tell you the quality of the lines that you have and help guide, you know, which ones need to be replaced. Phase 2, within the six to 10 years, is to actually construct that plant expansion. So right after 2030, have it in place that we know that we're going to have to expand the wastewater treatment plant. 11 to 20 years, um, you can move into providing service to currently unserved areas, still working on dilapidated manholes that really at that point should become a maintenance type thing where you just dedicate a chunk of money each year, you know, and start shipping away at each of those manholes. And then replace old vitrified clay pipes. Um, you know, again, it's just a chunk of money per year that you can just make constant improvements in your system. Okay? Storm drainage. Uh, we looked, we did an inventory of all your culverts in the city. Uh, we take the topographic, all those black lines, squiggly lines on there are all topographic lines so it can show you where things are going to drain within the city. City of West Tewocanee, you're kind of bifurcated by, by your two roads between 276 and Shore Road. Um, so everything north of 276 is going to flow north into the lake. Everything south of 276 and north of Shoreline is going to, it drains into the middle and then out east into the lake. And then everything south of Shoreline Road drains south into, into the lake. Um, so with driving around, what we want to do is we would just want to make sure that each of those culverts that are there, that are in those drainage pathways are the right size for the amount of water that's going to be coming through there. Next slide. So when you look at this, um, your light blue border around West Tewocanee, um, isn't because we just wanted to make it pretty? That's actually your 100-year floodplain. Um, and then the purple lines are going to be showing you the actual drainage areas. So we looked at the, the topographical, um, area and where it all drains to. And then the little light pink boxes, they're hard to see, but when you get in there, you can see them, um, are your actual culverts. So that's how we broke the whole map up and each, each area is accounted for its own amount of water and rain that comes into that volume. We see if it goes, if that's correct to go to that culvert. And a lot of times that volume will go into the next drainage area. So it's an additive process as you go down through the line. So we've done, um, there's a table in your report that has all your culverts and all the ones that are currently undersized for the current system are highlighted. And those are obviously areas that we would want to go ahead and upsize in the future or highlighting them for you guys to see which ones you would want to hire or upsize at the time. Go ahead, next one. So the same phases here, Phase 1, 2, and 3 over the next time periods. We've just kind of identified different areas, um, throughout the drainage system and kind of put it on a timescale of when you could get to a nothing. Nothing here was super critical. Obviously, we think water and sewer, you know, they have some, some hard and fast thresholds that are a little easier to look at. This one here is really driven by comments. You know, where in your city are you guys having problems? Do you have flooding? Do you have areas that are complaining when we get a big rainstorm? Um, you know, and that'll drive our priorities there. Um, and then just two pictures of culverts because, you know, after taking pictures of all your culverts, I had to share them with you. Obviously, the bottom one is a nice culvert where you can see things can come through it very easily. And the top one, we had to dig to find that culvert. But, alright, next slide. Streets, yes?
Did you, did you actually go around and inventory the culverts yourself or was just taken from a previous?
No, we didn't. My nanny came out and did a whole bunch of them and I did a whole bunch of them the next day. Met some very nice people, met some very unfriendly dogs. Protected dogs, not unfriendly. Okay, so next we move into the streets. We, what we've done here is we drove, drove through all, we didn't drive, didn't drive through all the streets. A lot of this was done on Google Earth as well, right?
No, my nanny came and drove all the streets.
You drove the streets too, okay? So drove all the streets in West Tewocanee and gave them more or less a grade. Um, and they're going to be color-coded as such when you look over here. Out of your 20 miles of road, 63% of them are asphalt, 37% are gravel or polichy. Your asphalt roads of those, 7% were considered high-grade. They're good, maybe some minor little things, but nothing that warranted any problems. Um, 18% were about average and then 38% were low-grade. And so the type of recon, or the type of, um, improvement that we suggested went along with the type of, uh, quality of the roads that you see. So the high qual, high-grade roads just need a seal coat. Okay? And usually that's done on, should be done on a every-two-year basis for regular road maintenance to keep a road at the, at the quality that it is now. Um, the average roads were considered, um, to overlay. So usually you chip up and mill up and then relay that back over the road. Um, it's not as invasive or as complicated as a reconstruction, but it prolongs the life of the road without having to do as much work. And then your low-grade roads were just to reconstruct. That's where you have to go down, redo the base and the asphalt on top. So next slide. Um, street improvements. Same thing, they're, did we miss the two before that? Alright, we just skipped straight ahead to 11 to 20 years on this one. But the picture is, there we go. The picture stays the same because we went ahead and we could put a plan together to put all the roads that needed to be done. But the amount of, the amount of money that it took to do that didn't look really feasible. So what we did is we kind of made this a hybrid and we looked at, um, the last comp plan, what you guys had for priorities. And so we married those priorities with the current status of the roads and then we came up with this. And so these are honoring the previous priorities that West Tewocanee had identified. Okay? So if you look on there again, they're going to be color-coded. Um, I think the green is Phase 1. The, the legend's on your map in here. And that's why you guys can look at these when you need to. But if you want to unroll those, the last two are the street maps. So that gives you the status. And then the proposed, you can see we highlighted. And then these down here, Phase 1, 2, and 3. Yes. So if you guys want to take a look at that. The doll's match, if you'd rather it taken, but you don't have to disperse them out. So the top one, that's going to be your current status. And then you cut the color for the current status on this one. And then we highlighted that according to the phase, the privilege of the day. And you guys can take these out as, as a council, mark them up and however you want to guide us to a different set of priorities. Is that it? Next one? Yep, and the next one? I think that's it. So I know that's a whole bunch of information giving to you guys, but you know, as, as it's been very heavily stated before, this is a draft. You know, this is going back with what West Tewocanee said previously, looking at what you guys have done and your existing conditions now and kind of where we think things should, not we, but where some of your regulatory thresholds are going to be, how you should plan going forward. But obviously, you know, it's open for your interpretation, your input, your priorities, and we will package it however you want it. Are there any questions?
I think the draft looks good. I'm, I'm anxious to see what you guys come up with, um, on the finished product. I think y'all did a really good job.
Thanks. Can we clap?
I mean, we're not supposed to. During citizen input, there could have been a comment, but legally, we can't, we can't do that. So nothing from the council? There's really not a vote needed on this, guys?
Thank you guys for all the work.
Shannon worked a lot with him as well. So she's also really good with one person. If you guys have some questions and comments and you want to direct them at these guys, that's good.
Yeah, Shannon and I've been on a few meetings.
So these funding sources, do you have recommendations with grant writers or something?
For what? Do you have recommendations with grant writers?
Uh, so actually, our firm is a, is a grant consulting firm. Kayla and I are at the planning division of that, uh, but we do have experience in a lot of those grants. I told the city if, if they want more, uh, you know, grants or agencies that they could reach out to, then we could certainly provide that with them.
And so y'all are, we're all thinking about, um, something? Yes, Sam? Yes. And if y'all want us to come out to me about that as well, we'd be more than happy to. Just let us know in.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
If y'all want to draw on those and y'all want us to come pick up the hard copies, we can come back out. Any way y'all want to give us those recommendations or changes, but that's what we'll come back with.
Same ones, the ones on the walls.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm breaking out this.
So there's not going to be any kind of motion. It's just going to lay here on the table. We're going to move to 8D. Discussion and/or take action on presentation from Lake Tewocanee Chamber of Commerce. We're using the park for the 65th Annual Catfish Festival. You all right?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, you guys go.
Good Lord, girls. I'm going to go to the plate.
So hi, I'm Deanna Sweeney. I'm one of the directors at the Chamber. Tammy, who's our other director, Rob McSear is one of our ambassadors. Um, our board fit actually do hear tonight. So we are in the works of planning the, we're wanting to revive the Catfish Festival. This year is the prime year to do it. It's the 65th anniversary of Lake Tewocanee being built. Um, so we've been in works with games, uh, Parks and Wildlife, the game wardens, we've talked to Hunt County sheriffs, all this stuff. So what we're planning is we're wanting to bring in carnival rides. We want all of our vendors that are going to do the games to be all of our local nonprofits so that they are making money for their organizations. We're bringing in, uh, the fishing tournament, Catfish Cook-Off, the QIST Blue Dolls are going to bring back the Lake Tewocanee pageant. So we're bringing all this back to the lake. And it's kind of growing a little bit too, so we're getting a little bit more information here and there. So what we're wanting from the park is to use the entire park, 10 pavilions. We do need four RV spots, but one of those is going to be rented for personal use. Three of them will be for food trucks. And then all of the tent sites, um, down in the center. We're going to have a kids' zone and then just vendors kind of throughout. We're working with a boat manufacturer to come set up boats that people can come and look at, talk about, things like that. We're going with a couple of businesses in Tewocanee to bring in like the running rails, their bait systems and all of that good fun stuff that come too. The game wardens are going to come out. We're going to do a kids' fishing area. They're going to supply us with the tank and stuff like that. And also do a couple of different, um, educational talks. Lake safety, wildlife, things like that. And we're also in the works of looking for a historian that can talk about Lake Tewocanee before the lake was here. And we're talking about the Native Americans that are like his name after. So, um, so that is where we're at on that. And on behalf of the board, I have been given permission as like a good space to, um, give 1% of the profits back to the city. So, um, and with that, we would like some help with just maintaining the trash, the bathrooms, making sure it's mowed and ready for the event. And I also want to offer the city a chance to use the parking donations as, um, a fundraiser for the park itself. So any of those issues, if y'all can work it, great. If not, then I would offer it to another nonprofit that can. But I want to offer it to the city first. So it's, um, 10 to 5, so it's a six-hour event. So gates would open at 10, close it down to 5. Primarily, it's going to be free. There are a few things that will have to come, like the rides will need, um, to be paid for. All of the rides that are going to be there are family-friendly. Um, children under 36 inches doing it and adults accompanying them. Over 42, I think, are good to go. So, um, and we'll work out the timing details. I'm staggering all the different shows and events and things like that too. I'm so sorry, that's probably important. Um, it's May 10th with the rain date of the 17th. Oh, I don't know.
How many people are you expecting?
Uh, we're hoping for 3,000 to 5,000, quite honestly, because it's a historic thing. We want to bring it out as many people as possible. So we've already kind of started hensing and pushing and getting attention for this and it's already getting a lot of attention, a lot of positivity.
What's your 3,000 to 5,000 that's going to be staggered, not at one time?
It's not going to be one time, it's going to be staggered. I'm sure people will come out for different events. The, the fishing tournament's going to bring in a different type of people than the beauty pageant, so. So the beauty pageant was something that was established originally when the Catfish Festival went on in the early 2000, uh, late 90s, early 2000s. It was been held by the bells. They are going to be responsible for all of that. We're just going to be on standby to help out with that. So, and it's going to range, I think, from toddlers to older people, retirees. My name all want it. And to go second.
People on the hiring.
There you go.
And Deanna and Tammy asked me to mention this as well because I do live here in West Tewocanee and I've been a former city council member, uh, that we do have the distinction from the state of Texas as a catfish chapel of Texas. So what a fitting place to have a catfish tournament like this. So I think it would be a great thing for us and would be a benefit to our businesses and, 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 uh, could see.
You mentioned 1% of the revenue back to the city. Where do you expect the revenue to be?
I cannot give you that right now because after paying for the fishing tournament and everything like that, I don't have a great, especially in this early in the year.
I don't feel.
So it would just, it would really just depend on how many people enter the tournament and enter the cook-off and things like that. Uh, it's not a lot because we're not looking at this to turn profits. It's really not to turn profits.
I understand, I understand. I just came in from the cost, the, the perspective of how much we, it will cost us to, to support you. And when we recover that cost, we need to look at that as a burden.
Okay, so I'm going to base this off of Jamfest kind of relatively because it's about the same cost and the same type of turnaround. So we probably topped out, I think, $1,200 last year, I think, is what it was. So it would.
Total revenue was $1,200?
Yeah, after, after everything was paid and sold and done. Yes.
Okay.
So we can get $20 out of it.
So I mean, we can go back and forth with the board.
That was the math I did.
So we can go back and forth with the board. I'm really hoping it's actually more than that. But that's just what Jamfest was last year and that's what I'm working with this year.
Absolutely. If the benefit to the city doesn't, the money doesn't, is the benefit I'm looking for. But I just want to see what the, what, what we need to budget to be able to support you guys.
No, I understand, so.
You said parking donations?
Yes, ma'am.
What are you charging for head?
So we don't. So it's, it's on donation base, so they either donate or they don't at their discretion. So as they come into the gates. We've used it for the fire department, we use it for the, uh, the young Marines and we've used it for.
Generation faith church.
Thank you, um, a couple of different times. And they've gotten some really good revenue off of that.
They made about $2,000.
That would be if you donated that to the city, that's where the real.
Yes, that is where the real, yes. That's why.
That's what we talked about. So a little backstory, I went to the Chamber Commerce meeting, um, met with the board and we talked about all these things and you did a really good job of remembering all that. I was watching, you didn't, you didn't really pick your paper up at all. So I'm like, golly, she's got it all just right here. So, I mean, the date, I mean, come on. We, we got to give you that one, right?
Well, I, I'm born and raised here, I grew up here, went to the schools. I, my first job was at Shivers, Winter Snow Cone Stand, working for Tepi Hogs. My second job was Big D's Barbecue, serving steaks on a Saturday night. So what, West Tewocanee is very a big passion for me. I moved back to this community for my children. We were in Dallas, we were in a really bad school district and my older daughter, who's neurodivergent, was not getting what she needed. So reaching out and being back here, there are round people that I want them to be around that will inspire them, just like I was inspired to come back here and be a part of this.
I'm glad you did.
So yes, passion.
Glad you came back. Anybody else have any questions? As we talked about at the chamber meeting, I mean, the parking thing is, is a, a pop, big possibility, you know, as far as, as far as the city being able to recoup some money. And, and, and most of the things that we're going to do, you know, the mowing, that's something that's normal, that, that has to be dug. That's something we have to keep up with going. The bathrooms need to be kept up and cleaned and that's normal too, right? This is going to be on the weekends, so the bathroom should already be accessible and cleaned and ready to go for the citizens. Yeah, there'd be a little bit extra cleanup, you know, and trash or whatever, but.
And we always stay to help to clean up too. So we've been out there since 2, 3 o'clock in the morning sometimes.
I'm sure there'd be volunteers, you know, there'd be people that probably volunteer as well, so. I don't know, council?
What's the date?
May 10th.
So the city would need to commit both weekends and not run out those spaces for two weekends.
Well, all, all the spaces, well, other than tents, uh, the tower tent, whatever those are, there's seven spaces, all RV spots, we don't want anything to do with other than the four, but one will be rented out for our personal use, so.
But you want it all to tent?
Yeah, there's seven.
Yeah, the tent, the tent sites down the middle and I think, was it the, the RV sites?
We want the, yeah, the first three, four, four spots right there.
Bathrooms overall. So there would be those and I guess that's something we need to make note of and check the, uh, rental schedule for. May 10th and May 17th. And then if there's something already on those, try to call that person and ask them.
We can, we can book us different slots.
Well, I mean, we, this far, this far out, we should be able to call and say, hey, there's an event that.
And they still want to be part of it.
And, and, you know, if, if you, if they're willing to move, wanted that spot so bad, if they're willing to move, hey, give them a discount, right? Give them a, give them a discounted voucher for the next time. Say, hey, we'll, we'll give you your next one at 20% off.
We also might be able to throw in a little something before that actually.
Look at this three different ways. One, allowing the park fee over 1% and then also committing the parking.
Well, I think, I think what I heard was, I think what was being asked is that the city would allow them to use the park for 1% and then the donated parking would come to the city.
But you're wanting the city will have to work the parking?
Uh, yeah, so I, I wouldn't be able to work the park, yeah, so.
She can't get a commitment to help.
Yes, so you're looking at a six-hour event, so if you do shift changes, which is what we're planning to do with our volunteers too. So it, it should equal out. And if you need help organizing, I can help organize too. Pretty good.
I would want to do that.
That's what we need to make sure that we can.
Tables open, let's work it out and talk about it, figure out if we, if something we want to try to negotiate or get volunteers or what.
Council members are willing to volunteer to help with some of that. But it's going to take more than that.
Oh, yeah.
I think when we do Jamfest, it's two or three people at the gate at a time.
That's what it is.
So, um, I would do two, three people an hour and then change them out, two, three people an hour. And maybe people can do multiple shifts too. It won't be 100 degrees like in July, so that's one of the reasons why we're also expecting more people also. So, and it's ready to begin his funding season, it's perfect for the Catfish.
Sure we can get some public work from all this too.
I mean, I, I think, I mean, I don't know, council, that's on you guys. I'm, I'm willing to throw my hat in the name to be a volunteer and, and I think.
You could also offer it as community service hours too.
Oh, no.
I'll try.
Yeah, I mean, there's several things that we could do, but I would offer my, my name and hat for volunteering to volunteer for it. And I think, I think if we get volunteers and we do it like she, I'm glad you brought it up, how y'all did it, because we may not have thought of the shifts. But I mean, if we do it in shifts, whether it's one-hour shifts or whatever, you know, and, and we got volunteers and. I'm game. I'll, I'll definitely volunteer.
I'd work a couple hours.
And, you know, to be honest, I may, I may be able to tell some of my kids that they're going to volunteer.
That's why you have kids, right? That's why they do things for us.
I did a lot of things for them all these years.
Being on the board, I think it's a great idea for the city, but being on the board, I won't be able to vote on it. I need to abstain, but I do believe it's a great, great thing for our city and I personally will be donating my time to it, so.
Does he have to make the motion?
Somebody needs to make the motion. I'll make a motion if we stretch this proposal and do this. A second. Are we doing it 1% and we're doing the parking and 1% in the donation parking?
Okay.
Second.
I want to make sure it's known that the tent sites will be, in, in this motion, that the tent sites will be, uh, boarded or roped off for you guys. And then those first four campsite, RV sites from the bathrooms north.
Yes.
Will also be reserved as part of that motion. Are y'all good with that? With that on the motion?
For two weekends.
For two weekends. It's going to be for May 10th and May 17th for the rain date. Per day, right? Not both weekends, but if we don't use the tent, we'll use the 17th. That work for y'all?
Of course, man.
To add to that motion, okay. Motion was made by Ramsey, seconded by Chad.
Pre-stand. Abstain.
Thank you, sir. It's four and one abstain. Thank you.
I'm excited.
Appreciate you guys coming. All right. So that's going to take us to 8C, Executive Session, authorized 552.103. Possible litigation regarding electronic data removed from city, our former Public Works Director.
We're not going to need that. We, the electronic data was turned over, um, after the testing.
Okay, so that one, that one solved itself by the agenda being posted. Do we need to ask?
Um, there was an email account with all of our old reports and everything like that, and we had to get access to and had all that information turned over, but we do have that.
It was basically a password.
Yeah, it was a get the account, get in, get the login information, get the backup, um, change the backup devices and everything like that. We're, we're going to talk to Essential Business Solutions and they're going to, hopefully we'll get a backup of it too, just so we've got a log. The account's not going to be used anymore at all. It was just that we, it's got a whole bunch of old reports, CCQ, the Water Belting Board and things like that, and we kind of have all this down.
Okay. It'll take us to 8D, Discussion and Action for Public Works. There's going to be A through E on that. So that's going to take us to the first one. Going to be D, A. Public Works Director's vacancy and hiring process, intern leadership plan, job posting, contents and workplace hiring plan, timeline, ensuring transparency in hiring process. I think, um, we had one council member who's pretty passionate about some of these things. If you've got anything to bring into this, you can leave that off if you want.
Yeah, I just, just, uh, curious if they, have they put the job out there yet for the hiring?
I'm working on putting it together.
And I think I did have a question on that. I've been wanting to put a timeline on that. I mean, TML gives me a free 30 days. Do we want to do anything shorter, anything longer?
Post it for as long as we can. We're, we're going to post it until it's filled, essentially, until we've filled it and it's.
Okay, cool.
That's what I'm going to verify before I post it.
Within that, within that, uh, that line, Adam, do, is there anything that we need to add a timeline or ask that we have this posted by a certain time?
I'd see if posted right away.
Yeah, as soon as possible. Set to that?
Tomorrow.
I mean, I'm just trying to be realistic.
Is it ready to post? I mean, are we?
I, I've got a few more details to finish up, but I'll have it posted tomorrow.
I knew, there was already, I've seen kind of a draft that circulated on it too, so.
Where do you post it?
Where do you post it?
I'll post it on our TML website.
A lot of these. They know that the city's, or the hiring, that they go to the TML websites with us. We can post other places if we want to, but most of those places will also require payment.
Yes.
So TML isn't a free posting place.
Free, see what we get.
Yeah, yeah. Plan, hiring plan and timeline.
So is there any kind of motion that anybody's making on that or?
We, we kind of, we structured this as one big piece, so we can talk about everything.
Why don't you just do it like that?
Yeah, we've got like bullets.
Let's go to B, which is review and, and assess Public Works Department's staffing, structure, budget, operational needs, potential for outside contract.
And it looks like we've got a contract, two different people that we're doing for licensing purposes.
Yes.
Um, and I'm working on contracts, I've got kind of a draft of one that was gonna be for, if we did, somebody, if we could do it all. So I've gotta break it apart for water and then sewer, but whatever names, I don't remember.
Well, you got Dustin Awood and Jamie, what's Jamie's last name?
Michael Rubash.
Rubash.
Rubash, yeah.
And, and my thoughts are, I think that'll work out better having two of you. Because that'll, that'll allow one person to work with our people at the water treatment plant and one person to work with our people at the sewer treatment plant.
And for clarity, we can get fined by TCQ right now for not having a licensed operator. I know that, that there's been some discussions with TCQ and they said they would work with us. I don't know that that doesn't mean they still won't find us.
Well, I, I wanna be, I wanna be, because I've been the one that's been in constant communication with TCQ. I called them the day after Michael left and we had, I called them at 10 o'clock in the morning and by 3:30, we had a Teams meeting with them with eight TCQ representatives, with Mary, Chris and myself. TCQ has been working with us nonstop constantly. I have received, outside of me calling them and, and I think they've even probably called City Hall and talked to Mary. I've probably received eight to 10 phone calls from them and they were all supportive phone calls. I, I've, I've gotten, and I've, I've gotten zero, I wouldn't say threats, but indication that there's gonna be anything like that because we've been told every time, you guys are doing great, you're doing exactly what you need to do. Da da da, yada, yada, yada. So I, I think we're gonna be fine. And one of the phone calls that I had was the guy that probably would've told me what you just said because he actually called me because they were called saying that there was no license here. Right, and it was probably whomever, I don't care who it was, but this guy called and said, hey, are you aware, as the mayor, that y'all have a licensed operator for your waters, water and sewer plant? I said, yes, Sam. Told him what was going on, he goes, oh, well, apparently the people that we have already had our conference call and all that with, they don't talk to each other. And he's like, well, so here's what you're gonna have to do, and I'm like sitting here, excuse me, but I was driving, I'm sitting there pulling this email up. I said, well, hang on a minute, here's all the people that we talked to today already, or, I'm sorry, yesterday already. And I started reading the names, but when I got to the one name, Grant something, he goes, oh, okay, well, if he was involved, you're good. You communicate, y'all make sure you communicate, and that's what they told us, make sure that those eight folks, we communicate everything that we're doing and we will be okay.
I believe he told you that. I'm also telling you that TCQ can be, I don't always know what the left hand is doing, I don't always know what the right hand's doing, and so set to the point that you're like, oh, yeah, you did talk to that guy, so that's, and if, if they do send us some kind of fine letter, we can still address it and deal with it and hopefully get them to walk it back, but I, just like I said, I don't ever trust them not to.
And I don't, I don't think, I don't think we're, we've got email communication as well, it's not all verbal, we're, we're in email communication. I, I feel very good about it, and the, the only reason why I wanted to say all that was, I feel like that we as West Hawking, since I've been involved with the city, that we've always wanted to run from TCQ or we've always wanted to shy from TCQ, and I don't, I mean, I've been told by all of them, hey, we're not out to get you, it doesn't do us any good. So, I mean, I just think we need to be open and honest with them, and that's what I chose to do the day after Michael left, and it's been a very great experience, in my opinion.
So, um, as far as what we need for, we have to have licenses, so that's the number one priority, is to get somebody in place for, just to carry the license for us on. And there's, they're gonna do some limited work, training, they're committing to a certain amount of time. One of them was gonna do like 36 hours a month, one of them was gonna do three days a week with us.
He guaranteed us 36 hours a month, but said that he would not completely limit himself to that, and he's really close. He was very passionate about wanting to teach our people, and that's great. I mean, he wants to teach our people, and, and this guy's heart is, heart is in it, he's been doing this for 26 years. For the same water company. To me, that says something. He's been at the same water company for 26 years, which is not too far down the road. I feel really good about it.
And he's got both licenses or just one?
He, he has the, he has a B water license, so he has the B water license and the other gentleman has the C sewer license that we need. We, we were looking at another, another guy that had both licenses, but when we all talked about it, we thought, you know what? It may be actually better if we have one guy that would be at our, at our water treatment plant, one guy at our sewer treatment plant because you're gonna get better coverage that way. If you've got one guy having to cover both of them as a contract, you know, person, you're not gonna probably get near as much concentration on both processes.
As far as staffing needs, I think maybe at least for the interim, um, that's gonna be on you to talk about what we would need.
I don't think we need any staffing, we don't need any further staffing.
That's correct.
I think, I think what we have now is my work.
It's good to hear that, it's good to hear.
So the next one is C, Status of Current and Upcoming Public Works Projects Identifying and Prioritizing Critical Work Issues and Ongoing Projects Updates, Ongoing Infra- Infrastructure Projects Including Roads, Water Lines and Drainage Improvements, Addressing and Identifying Potential Delays Due to Threat and Hardness.
I'll speak on the Director's Report to Park first. I don't believe we're gonna have any, the only delays we've had are off there. I believe that's gonna be the worst of it. Other than that, we're gonna keep on moving. Um, as for roads, I don't want to have one set person on roads 24/7. I would like to rotate them. But you know, this, this past Friday, I gotta figure out who's best for that machine.
I got it.
But I'd like to, I'd like to have them on a rotation for roads. That way they don't get burnt out, because in our, in our line, we don't do the same thing twice every day. So if they're constantly doing that, they're gonna get burnt out and then they might lose them, so.
Still looking at at least one person on roads, once a week, yes. One person every day.
Or on a weekly rotation.
On a weekly rotation, yes. Roads or ditches or, okay.
Are you gonna do like a posted schedule where they kind of know who's gonna be?
Yeah.
Where? Um, maybe thoughts on, I know we're talking about roads, improvements for water lines, drainage, stuff like that?
Uh, not currently, no. I mean, we, we need improvements just about anywhere.
Are, are, uh, workers, are they flowing through this home run software?
Our workers are great.
Are they, are they coming through this home run software?
Yeah.
They're going through the FundView software.
Home run.
Yeah, all through FundView, which is the new accounting system that we have.
Okay.
They also have utility billing, um, all in, integrated with that, so with that, it has service orders. So anytime there's a work order that comes in through City Hall and/or our Public Works Department, they can put in a work order and then it's sent directly to them, therefore they can, once they get it prioritized, and they can send it out to the employees on which one that needs to be worked on.
And we can, we can shoot the backlog?
Yes, yes, and there is a work order reporting your consented items for this last month.
Right.
They've been working, I mean, with this new system, I feel like work orders are going out much more smoothly, they're getting worked out, worked through.
Yeah, I like, I like to lay the work orders harder through the new system.
Less paper.
Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to fix that with our old system.
Yes.
We just didn't, we, we didn't get much, uh, cooperation.
Yes, so with this.
There was resistance.
Yes, with this system, they get a text message notification when the work order's been created and it's assigned to a specific employee. If it, if it's reassigned, that's the, that's the glitch I'm still working on, is once it gets reassigned, it notifies them, but right now, we're still just communicating with them. Hey, so-and-so, I've sent, I put a work order under your name, check it out. But I think right now, we're looking at maybe four or five total of the work orders, and that's because those need to be bigger projects.
Who's in charge of assigning them?
So they automatically get assigned to now DJ and he prioritizes whom that goes under. It was going through JD and so was, are you still getting notifications? They're all going through JD.
I wanna make sure to expand on what you just said because I, I agree with it. But being only five that are still outstanding, it seems, that seems like a little low. And, and I don't want us to get into the habit that we think that all work orders must be closed.
Right.
I get it, we, we want to, we wanna close the work orders, right, because that means we completed something, but, I mean, as long as we're being realistic and say we can work on something and we don't complete it. We have the ability, if I understand correctly, we have the ability to make a note on it, but it's not completed yet.
And make a note and just save it, not save and complete it.
Yeah, luckily, that was one of the days I was here when we were going through the FundView seminars or whatever you wanna call them, but, uh, and that was, I was very excited about it because we need that. But I can't really stress enough that we don't need to get in the habit of work order, all work orders must be closed because if all work, work orders are closed, then that means anytime that anybody in this city drives around, that they see nothing, nothing wrong. And we all know that that's never gonna be the case. So we, we don't need to get in the habit of, no, well, I don't know, we have zero work order. Well, if we have zero work orders, then that means we should all been scouring the streets finding these things that the citizens are telling us that is wrong. So, you know, and, and I want us as a city, you know, to get in a, a good habit of issuing those work orders ourselves as we find things. As we're driving around, you know, have to go to the sewer plant to run labs, and when I come back, I see a stop sign laying in the ditch. I may not have the tools in the truck or the stuff in the truck to fix the stop sign, but I have the ability to put in a work order for it as, as a city employee, rather than a citizen having to call and say, you know, the stop sign's down over here in the ditch. But, you know, just, it's just something to think about. All right, so is that, that kind of fulfilled, that's C, we go to D. Emergency Preparedness for Public Works Services. Everybody good to go to that? So who's in charge during an emergency situation, otherwise ensure contingency plans, so the county is, the county is in, in ultimate charge of that? Then when it comes into the city, the county will contact me and the Chief of Police.
I don't think that's what we're, is that what, and I don't wanna be, that's like.
You're talking about the emergency preparedness plan for the water system?
For the public works.
Oh, for public works, so that's for the water system? So that is something that would be, I think Dustin actually just asked about that.
Yeah.
So these are things that, I don't think these points were being touched on like they were supposed to be, but Dustin asked about probably four or five things and then when he comes back, he asked Morgan to see if she could find this, this and this. So this gentleman has already came out here and, I mean, hasn't charged us nothing. He wanted to go see the plant, he sat and talked about the testing. I'm really excited about what he's gonna bring to our employees here in the city, um, as far as knowledge of it.
So for the, for the water, he would primarily be, and he, and he, and he expressed that he would have no problem doing that.
Right, so during that time, once we get him his license here, he would be the person that would be contacted first.
Yeah.
Right? But during that, anytime that there's an emergency, the, the mayor will be contacted.
Yeah, let's say.
At the same time, well, even if we have a water emergency, I'm gonna be contacted by TCQ immediately. Does that answer that for you?
Yes.
Uh, wrong mayor spoke on that because I never need to say it. So Public Input on Public Works Concerns, Consideration of Public Feedback, Section for Citizens Concerned Regarding Infrastructure Needs, Ensuring Transparency and in-Future Initiatives. So, I mean, I get it, it's just transparency, right, just wanting to make sure that the city knows what's going on and what we're doing and how and why we're doing it. I mean, I would think we could use Iris for those things, our website for those things.
But as, I, I did have a question, as you are asking about the feedback, um, do our council wanting a different way for citizens to give us feedback or are we just saying in general how that process works? Because getting information out to the citizens, we would do a Iris alert, we've also got our Facebook page, um, in the city website, but that's kind of where I had a question, is are we looking to create a new process for citizen feedback to where they can come in and express their concerns?
How do they give feedback now?
Place one, just call?
How they, how they give feedback, yes, typically we get lovely phone calls, emails, comments for Facebook, things of that nature. We don't use Facebook as a citizen response system, so a lot of times that's not one for 24/7. But I do get emails, phone calls. The Public Works Department has that phone number, that phone number's constantly ringing with lots of feedback coming in.
I think at some point, we're gonna be able to possibly open up the work order system to where citizens can access that.
Yes.
That might be a possible way that citizens could have a different avenue or touch from into the city.
They're working on the back office, so they're that right now giving, uh, citizen-specific work order options. Uh, right now, they're, you can do a reread, uh, they're gonna do a couple of other ones that are kind of a generalized statement, therefore once they put that through the portal, then we look at it, if we deem it as a necessary work order, then we will approve it and then it goes through its normal process.
I don't know if that would classify as a feedback, but.
If there's something that they see that they need to report.
I, I would think we could even possibly put a little ticker on our website that somebody could go in there, a feedback section.
There is a contact me section or contact here, and I do get those quite frequently with questions, concerns.
And you guys are gonna get email addresses.
Right.
That are city email addresses.
Yes.
And the citizens will be able to contact you directly when they've got other things.
Oh, they already do?
I know.
Generalized, they have a box just for that.
Right, exactly, you're gonna have city-specific email addresses that people will be able to contact you through. Those will be, uh, if we have like open record requests, those will come through those as well, so, you know, don't, don't use those for personal.
I'm talking, I already, I talked about that five months ago or so.
They've already been created, just waiting on our conversion. Yeah, uh, but that will, that's also like if somebody has an infrastructure comment and they wanna reach out to you directly and you want to address it on the agenda, then that's kind of how that process starts to work.
That's easy, just not getting, how you got?
Can I back up to, uh, issues, public works issues real quick? Um, we do have some.
What letter is that?
C.
C?
We do have some, we do have some lift station issues. Currently, we have five that's down.
Number five?
Number five.
Number five.
Number five lift station is down.
The pumps, the pumps are completely out, so we have to completely replace them.
Did we get that down to give us? Assessment on those yet?
Yes.
Yes, it'll be here Thursday.
Be fixed Thursday, right?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So we see where we live down from there.
Oh, you do? So that's, that's just one, that's just one of the many though. So before too long, we're gonna be replacing the plug, right?
Right, I think that's where his plan was going, I mean, I think we need to start really putting those on paper, quote unquote, and prioritizing those. I mean, that's the only way we're gonna knock them off, because, you know, the old saying goes, if it's not written, it didn't happen.
Right.
So, I, rather than us trying to say that, we know we got, what is it, 24 lift stations?
Yeah.
And out of the 24, we got 18 that something's wrong with them. Well, I can say that right now, but that doesn't tell me out of 24, which of those 18 are bad because I didn't say the numbers.
Right.
Right? Therefore, I didn't write them down. Well, even, even go further than that, if I didn't write them down, I didn't prioritize them to tell me which one I needed to fix first. Which one had the worst problem, right? That may not be the one that I prioritize, I may fix five that have the smallest problem and then number six would be the worst problem. So we've got to, I think that's where you're asking about prioritizing, so we've gotta get these things written down, recorded somewhere, and I'm asking, please, do that electronically. Don't write it on our pocket pad, don't write it in our three-subject notebook that we carry around in the truck that falls on the floorboard and our coffee pours on it. Please keep that electronically. Utilize this devilish technology that we all have nowadays, but I'm telling you, it's, it's such a, it's a great thing and it's, it's, it's a terrible thing. But we might as well embrace it, utilize it to our advantage, but, but I mean, that, I think that's what you're talking about, we're trying to prioritize and capture these things.
To get us better familiarized with, with what actually goes on with those, I'd like to, I'd like for a few of us to go to pumping motor classes.
I, I don't see a problem with that. But we might contact your vendors to get the license and out here to give you the pump and motor class.
Are you expecting that to be a cost outside of like budget cost or anywhere budgeted for?
I don't-
We did budget for, there was budget for additional trainings that I don't know are necessary. So if we could restructure, kind of that, where that money can go.
We budgeted for training, but what I'm saying is, network with your vendors.
Yeah, but you're right, Kevin may be up to just-
Well, now he will be up to it because vendors will do those things. You've got a vendor right now that will come out and do the class for fire hydrants. I mentioned that, I think you and Michael several months ago. All these vendors that we spend money with, their vendors offer these trainings, all you got to do is ask. There's another saying, if you don't know, you don't ask. So just ask your vendors, hey, do y'all have any training, pump and motor classes? Do you have any classes that, that are on the fire hydrants? And I'll tell you, for these, for these lift stations, if you guys, if you'll get with me the next time I'm around you, we'll, I'll show you online, you can do some motor control classes online and they're very simple. And it really helps a person get more comfortable troubleshooting motor controls. So when you open up that cabinet to look at that lift station control cabinet, it, it gives you a little bit more ease of mind. And, and you can start at, at intermediate and, and you can take the next one. And you have to actually pass a test on what you watch, but it's all free. Okay, so we backed up, now we're going back forward, correct?
I don't know, we've talked about everything, but I do think one thing council's going to have to talk about and vote on is we do want to, if we want to contract with these two guys. And I can't remember which one was which, but one of them is a, it's going to be a month to month on either, 2,000 a month for one and it's 1,500 a month for the other.
Right.
Okay. But again, we do have to have the month to month.
Well, we didn't really, I don't think we really put that on the line, but-
We have got digital for outside contracting, staffing structure, hiring plan. I mean, we've got a lot of things in here that that would qualify.
And you can put it in there, I guess, on, what was it, B? Yeah, that's a B. I mean, you can classify that in D, but yeah, we do have to do that. There is going to have to be a small contract written out. I don't know if that contract's something that the council's going to want to be brought to us or what?
Yeah.
We already have the basics on it, $2,000 a month for one and 1,500 for the other.
Yeah, and what we're looking at, and I've, I've got a draft of this, not we've calculated, but the, this was, I, we, I found out today their names and the amounts. So I don't have, there's no way to get that exact before y'all at this point. But I can tell you that the, what I've got is a, you know, waiver of liability and indemnification clause in it. I'm going to make some changes just based on, we'll do a month to month. What I was looking at is about a six-month contract under this month to month, where it would like renew automatically unless the city took some action to stop it. But then ultimately, it looks like it would do Thursday. And at that point, after that six-month mark, we can reevaluate if we want to. We need to keep using them or we've got our guys burn up down the licensing that we won't need that any longer. But, but that's what the, the plan behind it would be.
So under D, that's the only thing that there's really a motion needed for, correct? So we'd just be making motion to approve contracts month to month up to six months for water and sewer licensing.
Do you want to mention the amounts?
Water, 2,000, sewer, 1,500.
Motion made by Chris, second by James.
Judge Gobin.
Chris Burkett.
Okay, so that'll bring us to E, discussion interaction to approve or deny essential business solution technology lease program. Does everybody understand what that is?
I can do some explanations if there's questions. So with our current IT group, essential business solutions, they are doing our monitoring for our computers and technology. They've come out, offered a five-year lease program to upgrade us into compliance. There are several things that they found just by being here, the one or two times that I've actually been here to look at our network handling, our firewall, our network switches. And they've found some things that are high, high priority that need to get fixed. In order to do that, it was going to be very expensive to do one piece of equipment at a time, but they were able to get a, a pre-approval from Lenovo to get those taken care of. Within that pre-approval, we were able to get new computers, some new networking, and then some much-needed upgrades at the water plant, which would in result giving us internet at the RV park or the RV paths at the city park. So I know that's been a big question for a lot of people, making sure that there is internet out there or internet capabilities. We will have that there, we will have cell phone boosters and new network drops. And more specifically, we're going to have new, nine new computers, monitors, another laptop, new network switches, equipment racks, all the labor, all of combining police department, city hall in the one network. Currently, right now, we have two separate networks, but with their new technology, they'll be able to combine us, but keep our traffic separated. Of more network replacements, gateways, outdoor access part, points for the RV park. We will also have guest Wi-Fi networks in here and at the park and at the water plant. I think I've covered all the basic information and then five years of support. All that would then change, we currently pay 635 a month. Then we would end up paying 1,778 even a month. So there's a little bit more of a cost increase, but that's the total cost over a five-year span.
At the end of five years, do you own the computers?
Uh, the lease is up and then they will re, we will rotate out those computers for new computers if needed.
How much is the burden? Seventeen?
So it's 1,778 even a month.
For 60 months.
Yes.
65.
And that's already including the 635 in support that we currently pay.
And how many computers is that included in there?
So this is getting us nine new ones, but they're still monitoring all of them throughout PD, admin, code, water sewer, everybody.
Oh, so you guys use them for support?
Um, I feel like I talk to Justin or David at probably once a week, especially dealing with a lot of our outdated equipment. We did have our internet network go down completely due to one of our network switches and we could figure out what it was, but it was a bad switch that came out here same day, gave us a new switch. So that's one thing that's not included in this one day, but they gave us a new switch in this quote.
So what, what are the auto, you know, can they get here quickly and?
Yes, so they're based on some springs. A lot of things they can do remote, and then with the new network, the cloud key, it has some sort of fun fancy technological name to it. They can do even more remote work. They can get into our network if they see something wrong or they, they'll get a notification if something goes down before we even recognize it.
So I want to, since they brought them in last year, they do governmental compliance. Like they, they're in lots of school districts and they do all of Delta County. This is like their specialty is governmental compliance.
They do a lot of cities.
Yeah.
A lot of cities. I mean, they came in and did a whole presentation for us whenever we, whenever we went with them.
Several.
And so just, I just want to make sure everybody understands, it's for this, isn't the 1,778. It, it's 1,099 additional. We're already paying, I want to make sure I highlight that for you, we're already paying 679 a month.
Yes, 35.
So it's 2,300, right?
So it's, no, it's an additional to the 679, which is 1,099, which is a total of 1,778.
That's the total expense. We put all of our support, years of support in there. Uh, I did forget to mention that we will be converting all of our emails to the governmental Microsoft Outlook. Puts us completely in compliance there because right now we've got some areas of our staff that have Gmail, some have Outlook. It's not even a governmental Outlook, so we're migrating our whole Microsoft Office program.
They're doing that too.
Yes.
They, yeah, they can pull over, they're migrating.
Yes, they're going to convert everything over.
That's something that we need, right?
Absolutely. Compliance purposes, we absolutely need it.
So I'll make a motion to make. Even?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the essential business solutions technology lease program.
A second. Motion made by James. Second?
I did.
Yeah. You got the second?
Judge Gobin.
Randy.
Rick Swin.
Tim.
Chris Burkett.
Okay, that takes us to have discussion and undertake action to plan a workshop schedule to include all city boards and commissions to come together to discuss progress, issues, and concerns for the city.
Door's open now.
Alright, so this is, this is something that I've been working, I want to try to put together. We have all of our different boards and commissions, they're all working on different things. I don't think most each other knows what they're working on. We don't know what issues and concerns they're having. So I'd just like to figure out if we couldn't do a workshop once a month, where we've got at least the chairmans from all the boards and commissions together, so we can go over issues and concerns, what you're working on, what you need help with, and figure out how we can all help each other.
So that's interesting.
It is a great thing, but I want, you know, I want to be devil's advocate. Once a month scares me with everybody else's meetings. You got to think that your, your commissions, all your boards, they have a meeting once a month. We have a meeting once a month. I mean, I, I don't want us to set ourselves up for failure, if that makes sense. It's going to be, we, I think we had a conversation about this in a previous meeting and I made a suggestion that we do it maybe every other or once a quarter. Something that, that people can actually commit to. And, and you're going to have, you're going to have maybe everybody there every time. My fear is, and again, like I said, I'm playing devil's advocate. My fear is if we're doing it once a month and you've got the council members, they're meeting it here once a month. If you've got a council member on anything else, they're meeting there once a month. And then you've got your, your boards that they meet once a month. Do you see where this starts to get real busy?
Sure.
I just, I don't want to, I don't know.
And it's one of the things that we could probably, you might do it once a month for the first couple of months and then be jumping over to once a quarter, once we figure out how we're helping each other, how we may be able to even use our agenda here to communicate some of that moving forward.
So that'll create a quorum too, right?
Well, no, it's going to have to be an organized meeting. I mean, it has to be an organized workshop. Yeah, it's definitely a quorum, but, you know, we just-
You can do workshops as long as you're not voting on anything, then it's not, it's still people. The citizens can come and, and watch, but they can't comment. So you can kind of talk amongst yourselves at that point, but it's not a, as long as you're not voting, that's not a public comment period basically. It's just discussion of what you guys are wanting to do, where things are, that kind of thing.
And bring it into council meeting, yeah?
Video it, you're not videoing this, video it and the citizens will know what's happening.
Just bringing that up.
But let's, let's look at a workshop and see what kind of participation we get and see where to go forward from there.
But we need to make sure that if we have a workshop, we have some sort of basis of what are we calling it, I guess that would be. We need, we need to say what that's going to be called exactly.
Branches, chosen sections.
It's process issues and concerns within the boards and commissions.
We're going to schedule the plan one out?
James, I mean, is there a thought on when y'all will schedule the first one?
It's to be after all of the other meetings.
I know you were in your head when I'll be the other man.
So EDC is the first Monday, keep West Waukeganians the third Wednesday. Planning and zoning is the first Thursday. City Council is the second Tuesday. Building and standards is not a day yet.
Monday is probably as good as-
So, well, we have to be what, fourth Monday?
Yeah, it has to be, yeah, the fourth.
The fourth Monday?
It'd be like a fourth Monday.
Well, Jimmy, if you're doing something later in that week, kind of gives, you know, a setup if you had everybody else's meetings, you can set yourself up for city council next week.
So are we saying the first one would be March 24th?
I'm good with that. We'll get involved, open and see what we can do with it. What, what time?
March 24th, 6:30?
Is everybody good with that? Of course, we had checked it out, board, commissions. Fourth Monday at 6:30?
No. Uh, the first department auxiliary meets that night.
You should know that. Um, you could do fourth Thursday because that would still, or, let's see, y'all are third Wednesday, so that's last time.
We're the third Thursday.
Is it Thursdays?
Third Thursday, so we can do the fourth Thursday.
27th, March 27th, 6:30?
March 27th. At 6:30.
So we're looking at the 27th, did you guys state a time?
6:30.
6:30, okay.
Is there a motion for that?
Make a motion to hold a workshop on March 27th at 6:30.
Motion made by Chris, second by Greenzy.
Judge Gobin.
Chris Burkett.
Motion carries across the table. Okay, so that's going to take us to G, discussion or take action to appoint Donald over to the EDC board. Hello, Ms. Donald.
Hello.
You really longed in?
Listen, I, when I printed it out, I went, oh my goodness, I better take a nap. So I want to introduce myself, particularly to those of you who haven't worked directly with me, maybe don't know my background. Several of the people here do because I've been in the city now for over 20 years. And I've done a lot of work for the city, I've been on city council for many years. When James contacted me and asked me if he could nominate me to take his place on the EDC board, the first thing I said to him is I would gladly be willing to do that because I care about the city. I care about the businesses here, I've always wanted to bring more business in. But I also said to him, before I would commit to doing that, one of the things you need to do is you need to reach out to Kevin. Because he's our mayor, I voted for you. And I feel like the EDC needs to work in conjunction with city hall. It needs to be on the same team. So I would want to know kind of behind the scenes, have said, okay with Kevin. And I got back the feedback, absolutely. So then the second thing I said is, well, Pam Ray, who I think is an awesome person, she's the president of the EDC, so I also want her to be on board that that would be okay. And she would feel like I would fit into that. And I got back the feedback, yes. That, so I reached out to her and she said, yes. I will admit, when I attended the January meeting, it was a little bit of shock for me for Pam to resign suddenly at that meeting. But I still think you've got a good board that's there, you've got a good group of people who's there. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm a clinical psychologist. I've got my PhD from UT Southwestern Medical Center. I have been in private practice now for almost 35 years. My practice, it was primarily out of Plano. When I married my husband back in 2006, I moved out here to West Waukegan. I kept that Plano office open and then I opened a secondary office here in West Waukegan in 2018. So I bought the lot next door, built a house on it, and it now serves as my office. And that became my primary office in 2019, which was really a blessing for me because when COVID hit, then I didn't have to drive all the way into Plano to see patients. And most of my patients had kind of stayed on kind of teletherapy. A lot of people here already know me, I've been on council with Kevin and Chris Burkett. I serve on council for, gosh, five years. Finished an unexpired term that I did two times on that. I'm currently appointed as the secretary of the Lake Tewaquenee Planning and Zoning Commission. And I sit on that commission with Larry Para, who's also on the EDC board, and with Duane Hall. So Duane and I are with each other all the time. Which is great, awesome to do. I was asked a question in the January meeting about some of the other things that I've done besides just running the business, employing people. And so I gave them kind of a list. You guys should have my curriculum vitae where it's got that list behind it. I spent two years as secretary of the Collin County Psychological Association. I spent four years working with Mothers Against Drunk Driving on their board and being their primary psychological consultant here and down in Austin. I've spent, I did two years with- I've spent, I did two years with the Collin County Ballet Theater as the president, I actually set up that nonprofit and got that process running, and then I found myself, looking in my office, and I went, okay, I have to show you, because this is all I got for, for 10 years of service, and it was 10 years of every month getting a call, but I was on the Republican National Committee's Business Advisory Council from 1995 to 2005, and I thought you would appreciate this, President Bush sent this to me.
Oh, wow.
So I get to pretend like I'm a judge. Most of my work right now is doing some therapy, trying to wrap that up, and then I do a lot of court work, so I do a lot of custody evaluations, I've done some criminal, more criminal work at the beginning, some criminal court work now, I don't like the civil litigation, I did that for two years, and I'm just not the kind of, I'm not a good person to go in and say, oh, somebody's got psychological damage from this injury, and so they deserve this kind of compensation, that's just not really how I'm designed. What I do for most of the court work out of Dallas and Collin County is, I'm a child custody evaluator, so I'm the person that the judges say, we want Dr. Milburn to come in and tell us who's really a better parent, and who, if we've got somebody who's got a real problem, how do they be supervised, how do they get treated to get better. And my, the other thing I didn't mention at that meeting in January that I thought, you know, I really should have brought up, when I was on city council, I worked directly with the EDC on a number of issues. In 2019, we had a business owner who came in and brought to the city a plan for doing all kinds of development in the area, and they wanted the EDC to give them the land across the street from City Hall, and to give them a $10,000 basically bump for them to do this development they were gonna do. And at that time, the EDC was doing their due diligence, they did the best that they could, and they thought they had a really great plan, but they didn't think about going out and actually checking the site's projects. So on city council, I felt like it was my responsibility for the citizens, I got in the car, and my husband and I, we went, we went to DeSoto to go see that apartment building they had built, there was no apartment building there, they had not built it, so it was a vacant lot with a different company that was trying to sell it, and I contacted them and learned, there was never a contact with that person, with that development. I went to Roy City, where they said they had built all these small apartment complexes and a small strip mall, Roy City met with me, they never built that there. I went to Rowlett, where they had said they had done these buildings, and the people in Rowlett, City Hall were wonderful, their head of development got very agitated because they had no record of this person, and not only did she come through all of their electronic records, she went back to their paper records, and she drove out to the different buildings that he said he had built, and researched who the original construction people were, to come back and say, this person has never developed anything here, this is not true. The developments they said they did in Oklahoma, we did this, you know, that thing there, and went, they didn't do any of those developments up there. So by getting all that information, I also went down to Forney, where they were doing the same thing with the city of Forney, Forney had already given them the lot, and they were, had broken ground, so what they do is, you get somebody who comes in and makes this great presentation, you got people on a board who hear it, and it sounds great, and they believe in it, and then they give them the land, they give them the contract, they go out, they put up the stakes, they break ground, which is what they did in Forney, and then they don't come back, and they don't do anything with it. They use that in their marketing tool to get people to then give them money and donate them money, the money that came for the development here was all coming up from Seattle. So they've got these investors who believe they're getting this great building project going on, they use those as part of their portfolio to get that money, and then do anything with it for two or three years, then we have to pay the attorney to go to court and file and get that land back. The EDC has done that in the history of this city, three prior times before, in the last 25 years, and City Hall had to pay each time to go back and get that land back. So that was my first work with the EDC. Then the second work was in March of 2020, we had a grant to repair and finish Rabbit Cove Road that was coming in, we were coming to the end of being able to use that grant, we were gonna lose over $200,000 if we didn't have the matching funds to be able to do that grant. So the EDC at that time kept telling us that they couldn't do any infrastructure work, that is not accurate, it's a type B EDC. So what we did was, the city attorney and I, we put together a presentation, went to the EDC, explained to them what they could do, I audited all of their books for 2017, 2018, and 2019, showed them what they had spent money on, and I presented to them that their money, they had $158,000 sitting in the bank, they were making $70 a year, leaving that money in the bank. So we proposed, as a city, if they would loan the city the money, which they did, around $73,000, the city would pay them back at about like 3%, they actually would make over $7,000 on that payback from the city, the city wins, because we got Rabbit Cove Road done, and they win because they got a little bit more money back to be able to help them build businesses and bring businesses here. So I felt like in January, I didn't quite cover that I do know what an EDC does and my past work record, so I wanted to definitely cover that with you guys today. So, thank you.
Thank you, Emma.
Do we have any questions, Chris?
Yeah, I make a motion to appoint Donna Milburn to the EDC board.
Motion made by James.
I think it's...
You got votes?
Judge Kobe.
Chris Burkett.
Chris Burkett.
That takes us to H.
Thank you, I will work hard for you guys, I promise.
I can't believe it took you three tries to figure out that guy was scanning. So, discussion and undertake action to accept the resignation of Sharon Cunningham on Planning and Zoning Committee.
She is non, but she is actually moving to Oklahoma.
I'm gonna make a motion, I guess, and I make a motion to approve, or accept the resignation of Shannon Cunningham on the PNC committee.
I'll second that.
Motion made by James, second by Chris, you got votes now?
Judge Young.
Chris Burkett.
Judge Young.
Chris Burkett.
Okay, that takes us to I, discussion and undertake action on dissolution of the Planning and Zoning Committee.
I was on the Planning and Zoning Committee, you were on it, you know, a lot of times, people actually do go and look at these places, you know, and I know this time, Chris did about that development we were talking about earlier, there's just a lot of groundwork being done, I think it's, there's a lot of duplication, I understand, you know, but there is a lot of groundwork being done, and not only that, you know, we are growing, you know, we just won't be able to handle a lot of it, you know, the council won't be able to, I think we should keep it.
So, I'd like to know why it's on there, what concern brought it up to have it put on there, where are we, how did it come about?
We started talking about it just kind of in office, because I think for the last two years, that most of what we had seen go on, the planning and zoning, was just what was flats, it rezones, that had been submitted, and so it ends up, it ended up kind of just being a, we wash it through the planning and zoning, and then it just comes immediately before council, but there wasn't much, I want to say that maybe this last meeting was the first time we'd even seen a break between, or I was gonna say a break, because we'd voted on it, that we've even seen them not really approve something, yeah. So it just ended up being kind of a rubber stamp future, and we're still, I don't disagree that we need more planning and preparation for the future, but a lot of that's already happening to council, I mean, by virtue of the fact that the comprehensive plan came straight to y'all, you know, the plan, the zoning, all that's gonna come straight to y'all, that's not even really starting through your planning and zoning committee, that is, that the council is largely actually already consumed the role of what y'all's planning and zoning would, probably should have been doing, but it's not doing, and I don't know, and I think the other issue is, we have a lot of, you get a lot of turnover, we've got a lot of boards, and you've got a lot of turnover and gaps, and it becomes hard to fill, hard to keep people in place.
I think if we're trying to limit or eliminate duplication, maybe let them do a lot more work, and then they'll tell us that, you know, we do a bit less work, there's just going to be a lot more construction, a lot more growth.
From your perspective, as somebody who's had, who dealt with planning as I do the last couple of years, building buildings, it was, the one thing that they did for me was the ability, they let me practice presenting to council, and, you know, and they let me, I think that when you say that a lot of things, that a lot of things get approved, I think they get approved because planning and zoning and code enforcement, they helped them understand the codes and the things that they need to do before it comes to council, where council comes in, and if they were to present without that education and practice, we might have a lot more concerns on what they were trying to do, and, so, from a citizen's standpoint, I can see where having planning and zoning gives you more access to the information and the knowledge that you need to be able to come present to council.
Yeah, and a lot of that's already running through Shannon, is what's going on.
No question, no question, she's the queen of thinking through, there's no doubt, there's no doubt that Shannon is absolutely the person that gets you through it, but I think that, but I do think that council, or that PNC gives you the opportunity to present a plan to council that has a chance to be a burden.
I think tonight, tonight illustrated some benefits from PNC that I haven't seen before, because they thought of some things that I certainly wasn't gonna think of, shouldn't have heard. And so, as much as I, I understand the duplication, and that tonight really kind of opened my eyes to...
I agree, I mean, I agree with all of y'all, I mean, Charles' bump, but I agree, I think the PNC is, I think it's important, I mean, I seen, well, when this agenda was discussed with me, I knew it was on there, but I didn't make no comment to it, but, you know, it was news to you, Chris, it was news to me, I mean, this line never was discussed with me as far as whether or not we were doing what, but so when I seen it, I just left it there, and I think that's probably something that we should think about, talking about or addressing, right, I mean, I had no clue that this was gonna wind where it was on our agenda for.
I'm surprised, I was, I was pretty sure that you would, this had run through you as well, I thought we talked about that as well, or led it to come through your office, so.
Somebody never run that board, and do we, have we, have we sent them for any kind of schooling?
There has been some training in the past, which I think Sharon was part of one of those.
Anybody other than Chris Bonowitz on that board has any training?
Is it due that they're not, we're not sending them, or they're not being sent, or? Are we, is the city setting them up for success, or we, I mean, who's the chairman of that board, maybe having this workshop that we're gonna have, we can see some of the problems that they have, so it might be beneficial, so.
I will say, like, one of the first times this really came up was the last time, we had to, when it was George Roddy's, they ran some replat, we ran into, where we had that horrible ice storm, we had to keep that meeting, because it has to go in front of PNC before it can go before council, and we were scrambling for something that we had really well, and that's part of what went on here, is we had really well researched, we knew what was going on, we had been in like legal discussions with, with Mr. Roddy, and that's kind of how it came up, is we were hoping that the PNC could even get there to have the meeting.
I was making aware of that.
Yeah.
Shannon called me that, man, but I mean, as far as being, ever, ever any discussions with me about the PNC being dismantled, that, I have not been part of any of those discussions.
I could tell you, each time it's brought before us, I take in consideration their input, because they've gotten out and done a lot of the homework, so. I don't think getting rid of them is the right answer, maybe we need to be working with them, figuring out how they can help more, and how we can benefit more from them.
And maybe, maybe we look at, if it, you know, if there's too much activity, could we look at the meeting every other month?
That would make it harder for us, when people come board with free flats, and these other things.
That would actually be real, almost impossible, because when someone brings in a request, we have so much time to get it forwarded.
I think we should look at, still look at some ways to streamline, you know, you know that they, when they spend an hour on a project, you know, we end up probably spending five minutes, so they do, there's a lot of work that does go on, you know, in PNC.
It's probably a good idea in the workshop to figure out the ways that we can help.
Yes.
I think so. That would be beneficial.
Yeah, let's use that, let's use that time, yeah, let's, let's use that time to make that process easier on the city, less of a burden on the city employees.
I think so, that's...
So it's not like everybody's in agreement that we don't want to do away with it, so we actually don't need to go, just...
So any other further discussion on that? I don't know, I think there's none, we will move, we will move past it. So that takes us to J, discussion and or action on Keep West Wackeney Beautiful sponsored signs for the city. So, we have two signs at both ends of the city that, that Keep West Wackeney Beautiful, that was approved, and they got, they've got on order, those signs are ready, I mean, these folks are ready to bring these signs out, put them in tomorrow. Unfortunately, Text Dot, for the west end of town, Text Dot told us no for six different reasons, I don't, my computer went dead, or I wasn't gonna be able to read that email. Text Dot told us no for six different reasons, some being the construction of the sign, some being the, I think, the concrete base, or, I mean, there's six, literally six different reasons of why there was no. Or was it Thursday of last week, I could have looked at my text message, because it was the same day that Dwayne reached out to me, and we got an email from Sabine River SRA. They are working on a, a contract agreement for us to be able to put it on their land, or the SRA land, but, the problem was, the very last email that we got, they were talking about they were gonna be checking with Text Dot to make sure nothing was gonna be interfering there, so my fear is now, they're gonna go to Text Dot, it's, I think that sign's probably about a hundred and something feet off the road, I don't know, well, what we read was, that's what we read, but when talking to that guy on the phone, he said it goes a little bit further than that when we started talking about...
Oh, no, I meant our placement was 54 foot off the highway.
On that one? Oh, so I think what we read was 51 feet or something.
51 from the center.
51 from the center, but, so I, I don't know, we're, right now, we're waiting on the attorney.
Edge, correct?
Yeah, we're waiting on the attorney from SRA to write up an agreement, shall they deem that that agreement can be written up, I guess, after they have checked, done their checking with Text Dot, so I mean, it's almost like the imposter task, and, and I'll be honest with you, it's very disappointing to me, because I drive, I drive all over Texas.
And we've been working on this, everybody, for everybody's information, for over 10 years now, to get signs put up, so that people know, driving down 276, that we're even a city. There's nothing to denote, other than City Hall out here, and the city limit sign, but as far as welcome to West Wackeney, people don't know that it's different from Quinlan, or where Quinlan stops and we start, so, we have raised money, and they're ready, I mean, one sign is perfect, it's beautiful.
Thank you very much, but, I mean, unfortunately, we can't go back and forth with the crowd, that's state, state, well, state reasons, not ours.
So those six reasons that Text Dot gave you, probably things that had been written in it?
Well, no, it was the sign construction, the sign, I would, sorry, I would try to pull it up on my phone, but I would find it faster here, Shannon may have printed it. There were six different reasons that these signs won't work, according to Text Dot. So, I mean, and these signs... So, I mean, and these signs are already.
They won't work in that, in the place that we requested.
Right, in any Text Dot, what do they call it, right of way? Any Text Dot right of way.
So if it's like constructed differently, that would work, right?
I think they're done.
Yeah, they are.
They're done.
They're finished. So looking at having to move from where they originally wanted one.
Here, I had here six. Always load up.
Alicia, help. Oh, you've got that dark screen too.
Sorry.
So Text Dot will require a letter ordinance from the city of West Waukegan regarding the placement of the city grant sign, Text Dot, on Text Dot right of way. That would be easy, right?
Yes.
The location and placement based on the current city limits need to be revised. Current West Waukegan city limits is near Quail Run Creek Road.
So it can be done too, right?
City limits, we can't.
Then we can move it to a different place then.
Right, we would have to move the sign to a different place in the right of way. Breakaway posts will be needed to be installed for the sign in the right of way. The ninety-six by ninety-six concrete footing is not allowed in the right of way. A boulder wood or eleven gauge coated metal frame would not be allowed as these are not standard sign materials placed in Text Dot right of way. Number six is donor logos will not be allowed in the Text Dot right of way. I mean, it just got, it got worse and worse.
How much of the right of way, how much of the vote is there right of way?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one, fifty-one feet from the center.
Allowed.
So our only, our only thing here now is to try, I mean, is to see if there's a private citizen that would allow this to happen, but then there's going to have to be probably a contract or some kind of legal, I don't know. There, those people need to be protected too, right? They need to have some sort of a release of responsibility.
Maybe the domain or the purchase.
Maybe, I don't know, something, so, I mean, it's, I, I think this is unfortunate, and I hate to say it, and it sounds bad if I do say this, but I'm just going to go ahead and say it. It, it's sort of a classic cart before the horse type of deal, is, is what this is. And, you know, I, I don't think, I don't, I think, I don't think it was intended to be that way. I think what happened was, nobody thought it would be this big of a battle for these signs to be, would be allowed to be placed in these areas. Because I was saying, well, I drive all over Texas, all, all over the states, you know, surrounding states, and I see signs, something similar like this all over the place. I don't know how many times I've seen them in the medians.
Highway 205 in Lavon, forty-three, there's a giant brick Lavon sign, ten feet from 205.
I know, so I mean, I've seen, so.
There's people that's sixty.
My only guess is, is those cities or those entities, they just went and placed the darn things and it was, I think somebody said earlier, it's, it's better to ask for forgiveness than just for permission.
Probably not.
Unfortunately, we've already asked.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, and I've just said that on that reported device over there, so we shall not go place these signs after these things have opened.
Our plan is to go outside the Text Dot right of way.
Can you define wheat?
I don't know, we have. Not, not, it's not in the areas that would be sensible.
So basically, we're working on the SRA side right now. We're working on that. The other end of town, it sounds like what we need to be looking at, additional property to put that on.
Yes.
Is that something you guys are already working on? So maybe when we have our workshop, if they need some help with that, we can see where we can help.
So that's, that's where we're at. I mean, that was, that was put on here and, and I mean, all we can do is just the unfortunate update or unfortunate news. I mean, there's, I mean, it's all, bad news, the only news we got, but we're going to give it. I don't, I don't think there's anything to be done there.
Are we going to have some storage? Since the sign is completed, what are you going to do about storage? Is you just vendor at some point and say?
He's already said that. Thank you for asking, but he's already said he needs the space because it's humongous.
And to clarify, he only has one of them built. One is not, it's just barely started, the frame is just barely welded together.
Then we stop it and then get some.
We can't, we can't go back. Unfortunately, we could.
We can ask West Waukegan Beautiful questions.
We could ask them to explain, but I mean, as far as going back and forth, I mean, we, we would have to make sure we brought them up here and tell them what's going on. I, I think we just bring it up in that, in, in that workshop on the twenty-fifth, maybe, maybe we have.
Council can ask questions to people with knowledge. You can do that because that's on the top, but you can't have random citizen comments from, that aren't invited. So if you're talking to members of Keep West Waukegan Beautiful and you've got questions to keep of Keep West, they can answer those questions because they would have that knowledge of the sign. So yeah, if you want, like, I know that you know, you've been working on it for a long time. So they, council can do that, council can ask questions as long as it's not something that's not on the agenda and we're not just responding to random comments outside of citizen commentary.
That can be asked a question then?
Yes.
Can we stop the construction of the second sign and then get some money back?
We don't want to.
We don't want to.
But no, but, or okay then, you know, when we can put it in.
No, we can't.
Now, we've already gotten approval from council and to come up with two signs and one of them is ready and he's running out of space to put it. So he wants to put it outside of his shop over in Emery. And I fear about that, I really do. The thing is humongous, it needs to be in place. And of course, we want to have an unveiling. This has been something we've been trying to do for years and years. And we want to have a special ceremony and unveiling of this beautiful sign so the community can come out and some people from Hunt County, commissioners and different people, just to see the new sign. And we just really need to see how long it's going to be for SRA's attorneys to get back with us with the contract. Because I don't want to see anything happen to the sign that he puts it outside of his building.
We're all, we're all three in an email chain with SRA. I mean, it's, I think it was Thursday of last week when you told us that they're waiting on their attorney to get the Text Dot approval and then they will draw up the contract. But I mean, we're, we're at somebody else's liberty right now. I mean, it's not a decision to be made by the city of West Waukegan, it's not a decision to be made by the council, by the city employees, anybody. I mean, the, the city has already went down and taken down the cattle barn sign that we were, we were given written consent to take the cattle barn sign down, that that's where this sign was being planned to be placed. But, I mean, the, the, the city's hands are tied. We, we don't have any control in this.
So we can basically move on from that one, next we can go down on that one.
Okay, is discussion and interaction on status of SRA grant for the amount of $20,000. I think that wasn't an overcommitment made by previous personnel, in my opinion. That's what I think. I don't think there's ever been any absolute commitment by SRA to give us a $20,000 grant.
What was it?
So there was conversations that if we would clean up the point, which is at the park, if we would clean that point up, then SRA would look at giving us some help, whether I, by rip raft or to help rebuild shoreline or maybe boat ramp help, whatever, there's different things, but it was all conversation. There was no agreements, no anything. I think it was a, a wish, hope and a dream that we're going to clean up, clean up the point and that they're going to give us $20,000. There was never an amount, I was, I mean, I was involved in several conversations on that. So there was never a true amount, it was a wish, hope and a dream.
Did, did we do the actions that they asked us to do?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's been quite a bit of work done. I haven't been out there probably in two weeks, but there was quite a bit of clearing down by contractors and by public works. And there's more work for us to do out there.
That, that $20,000 is budgeted in the, in the budget base?
Yeah, we'll probably have to do a budgeting sometime. I don't remember who asked for that one to be on there. I know it's been something. Was it you?
Yes.
You asked for that one to be on together? You're right, I couldn't, I couldn't remember. Yeah. This agenda is rather long, so I can't remember why some things are on here at some point. Is there anything, any other discussion or?
Yeah.
Okay. So that takes us to L, discussion and interaction to take. What's that?
No, we don't need that one.
Discussion and interaction on the contract written for Michael Stafford on 2525 and presented on 26. So, I mean, there was a contract that was written there.
Yeah, this is part of the, trying to figure out getting licensing and we were, we don't need it now because it's not happened, but.
No, I.
Somebody else, or that's what went on.
I understand that. I asked for this one to be placed on, on the agenda so the council would know that we actually made a contract, presented a contract, but, I mean, and, and the contract was denied. So, I mean, I, I would just ask, I, I had this put on there so we could all publicly know and say that anytime these things happen, I would ask that the council and/or myself are included in those.
Yeah, anywhere. And part of what happened here was that.
No, hold on, let's, let's.
Yeah, we, we sent that out with, I sent that to you and Chris and to Mary, so when it, when we circulated it.
Let's, let's back up this a second.
I, well, I'm going to talk, you want to, so let me, I'm going to inform them because this is what we want on. At post special meeting, we had immediate problems because that was, the next day was Mike's last day. We were talking about what we had to do because we were then all the way after, on the sixth, is the day one of no licensing. And so we were immediately concerned about, we've got to take an action. Now, we did know, we had that two weeks notice and we didn't talk to anybody else that was, had the appropriate licensing in the meantime, unfortunately. So we got up against this wall of, we were afraid we were going to get, like, immediately start fined by TCEQ. We hadn't, nobody had talked to TCEQ yet if they were going to give us any leniency. So we drafted a thirty-day, per, per what his resignation letter was, with that contracted amount of what we could do on a thirty-day ba, rotating basis where the city could cancel it and that we were going to bring it back up for, for kind of confirmation. It had a termination window in it where we could have still terminated within that window, but, but the idea behind it was emergency action to make sure the city didn't get fined and that we had that, that contracting in place to make sure we had a license on the wall. So again, as soon as I completed it, the day after the special council meeting, sent it out that evening, sent it to the mayor, sent it to Mayor Pro Tem, sent it over to Mary, and we kind of went from, from there. At that point, because I said Mike did not want to do that, part of that contract had been that he would have to turn over his email account, he did end up doing that anyways. But, but like I said, it's going to be largely the same contract that we're, are going to do for these, the two guys, the indemnification clause like I was talking about, they have to agree that they're non-employees of the city, he was going to have to agree to that as well because somebody who was employee of the city, nobody was trying to get in the way of his retirement rights or anything like that. But anybody who's a contractor has to agree that they are not entitled to our retirement system under this contract where they're just like a 1099 employee. So, so that's what was submitted. I, he wasn't familiar with that kind of contract ultimately and it scared him.
So sending, sending something and discussing something is entirely two different things. That's the main reason why I wanted this on this agenda. At any cost, if there's a contractor, if there's a discussion that has to do with the health and safety of our city, I have to be, I have to be spoken to about those things. And then our council will have to be notified about them before, not after. And, and that's, that's all, that's the only thing I'm asking, is in the future that these things are communicated properly to the council and to myself.
Anyways.
An email sent to somebody with no recollection of them, them knowing or hearing or anything, it wasn't. So all I'm saying is, in the future.
We, we had discussions about the need for a contract.
I don't want to, I don't want to.
I understand, but I don't want it.
Hold on, I'm speaking, I'm, I do not want to banner back and forth about this at all. We're done, we're done discussing that. All I'm saying is.
It is inappropriate to convey that I did not appropriately, like, explain this.
There was zero conversation, the phone call had.
There, the conversation was had, the conversation was had.
Lee, enough, enough.
I am, you hired me to explain the legality of things and I am.
Lee, enough.
It was had a conversation.
Please stop, please stop, please stop. I'm asking you, please stop.
You are implying that we did something illegal and I am making it clear that that was not.
I am asking you to please stop.
I understand that.
Okay, then please stop. Please stop. Number nine is future agenda items.
No time to email, but you can do that maybe too, eh?
Okay. So nothing now for those?
Nothing now.
So we're going to move on to number 10, citizens input three-minute limit for the non-agenda related items. We've got Charles, is it Miller?
Mullin. Ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate. What's that?
I, I knew that.
Let me see, you know who I am. Thank you for letting me speak, look, my name, for everybody who don't know me, I'm Pastor Charlie Mullin. I'm the head pastor of Lakeside Community Church right down the road down here. I'm not going to preach to you, I didn't even bring my Bible. I know we're doing a lot of expansion really quick, we're planning on doing a whole lot of things. Like I said, I'm not going to preach at you, but I will remind you of a story in the Bible, be careful about building your house on sand, which is what we're doing. Also, I'm kind of at my wits' end because I just spent pretty close to $400 having rats and mice removed from my church. And I cleaned up everything that I can clean up, but I have a nasty brush pile about ten feet off the back of my property that's in the city park. Please clean it up. It's been there for years. I can't stop my rodent problem until you help me. And I got another thing, two years ago when we first got down here, Rabbit Cove was a flooded mess. My wife hit a pothole, fifteen hundred dollars worth of damage to her car. I can't fix it, it's sitting at my church right now. I hit a pothole this morning that you couldn't see because the bar ditches won't drain. Now my steering wheel's turned sideways. This is the second front end alignment that I'm, that I'm going to have to go have on this truck. I can't afford to do it. So I'm going to go and get an estimate and I'm going to ask the city to pay for my front end line. And if that's a problem, somebody needs to tell me. But I can't do it anymore. I can't keep paying for vehicle repairs because we can't get a street fixed. You can't even drive equipment down there. That's all I have to say. I appreciate everything, I do everything I can for this town and I will continue to do so, but I need some help too.
Thank you, sir. All right, that's going to take us to, we're going to. Anybody know where we're at?
Make a motion.
What's your motion for, sir? Motion, motion made by Chris to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Who won? Greg?
I heard Greg was.
Um, we got votes?
Chuck, you have it?
JD, you're going to have to learn how to put this leading on that chain.
We got votes?
Because I want you to.
Oh, we got it to work.
Just working.
Okay.